Calling to order the Weaver City Council Meeting of September 9th, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Joyce J., Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
And I was informed by Mr. Pond that he would not be here this evening.
Oh, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 26, 2013?
Show move.
Second.
I have a motion to approve a second by Mr. Reinhardt. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. It's the World Alzheimer's Disease Month, and I'd ask Daphne Rice Allen to please step forward to the podium, and our city clerk is going to read the proclamation tonight. And I guess our police officer is going to take some photos. Oh, right up there. Thanks. Thank you.
Whereas the nation and the state of Colorado observe Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month during the month of September, and whereas Alzheimer's Disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas an estimated 5.2 million Americans have Alzheimer's Disease, 72,000 in our state alone, and whereas Alzheimer's Disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas the value of unpaid care in Colorado in 2012 was valued at $3.2 billion, that's billion with a B, and whereas in recognition of the individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with Alzheimer's Disease, and the researchers who are seeking a cause or cure, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's Disease and related disorders thereby improving the quality of human life for those living with Alzheimer's Disease and their care partners, now therefore I, Jerry DeTulio, Mayor and the City Council of the city of Wheat Ridge, ask all residents to move the cause forward by joining the walk to end Alzheimer's in Denver City Park on Sunday, September 21st, and proclaim the month of September 2013 as World Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Signed by Mayor Jerry DeTulio.
And this is your copy of this. I think, did you want to speak? You can say something if you want to.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Alzheimer's Association Colorado Chapter, we want to thank you. I have been the helpline coordinator now for five years and have grown and learned so much about this disease that I did not know, and as this proclamation states, it not only affects the person that has the dementia, but affects the family, the neighborhood, the church, your social club, your neighborhood, and so many police who have gone to incidences. And so it's just grateful, we are just grateful that you all are recognizing this and standing behind us as we move forward with as much research and as much money as we can, and hopefully we will see everyone at the walk in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any item that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Please step forward if you're here to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Please play your last name for the record, and please state your city and or your address.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Snow, S-N-O-W. I live at 3850 Carr Street, and I'm here to speak to you tonight to make an announcement. Some of you have maybe heard already. I am the president of Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods, an organization that's existed in the city for 20-some years, maybe, I think, 28 years, and for over 20 years, we have held an annual election forum. It takes place here in the council chambers. This year it will take place on October 2nd at 7:00 PM. This is a wonderful opportunity that we bring to our citizens here. We actually get speakers here for and against all ballot issues. We get all candidates that you will see for all of the races that will appear on any Wheat Ridge ballot, and this year being a municipal election year, there are races for five different seats in the city of Wheat Ridge, including our mayor seat and one position on each of the four council seats. So on the election forum evening, you will get to hear speakers, speeches from our candidates, and also speakers for and against the ballot issues that will appear, both the statewide and if there's, I'm not actually sure yet if there's any others that aren't statewide, if they're county or special district, you'll hear speakers for and against them. Now, the fun part about this is that there's a way for citizens, all citizens, to participate. The election forum for our city positions is actually a question and answer format. Those questions are, come from citizens who submit them. So I'd like to invite citizens of Wheat Ridge and anybody, this is anybody in the city, to submit questions that are relevant and current that you'd like our candidates to answer at the election forum. So here's what you need to do. If you have a question you'd like to submit, please email that to wrun@googlegroups.com. And I'll say that again, because I know if anybody's watching at home, you're grabbing a pencil, that's wrun@googlegroups.com. Simply email us your question. Let us know what race you're actually submitting a question for, whether or not that's for the mayor or for one of the council positions, and again, let us know your name, and we'll then take a collection of all those questions that are submitted, and Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods will select the best 10 questions, and then we try to leave a little bit of this, some spontaneity into it. We'll allow our candidates to see all 10 questions that are selected some days before the election forum, but when they get there, they're not going to know which of the four or five questions they're going to have to answer live on television that night. So there's some fun with that. But I really would like to get some submissions from all of you, because what matters here is that your candidates are asking the questions that you want to hear. So anybody can submit those. City staff are welcome too. Our existing council members, in fact, if you're a candidate yourself, there's nothing wrong with submitting a question that you think should be asked of yourselves even. So please, again, send us your questions. The election forum, once again, is October 2nd, 7:00 PM. It takes place here in the council chambers, and a thanks has to go to our city council and to the city, because they offer their videography services, which means we get to watch that live on cable, on the cable channel, Channel 8, and then it gets rebroadcast daily up until election day. So it's something that you don't have to see the entire two hours all in one sitting. You can see pieces of it as it repeats. One more time, the email to send those questions is wrun@googlegroups.com. Okay? Thanks so much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for public comment on any items on the agenda? I'm using egg timer tonight, because I forgot my cellphone. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Starker?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to augment the agenda with the, an item that will discuss the confidential investigation report to Mr. Dahl, prepared by Mr. Samuel Light, dated September 6th, 2013.
Do you want to add that as item number nine?
That'll be fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Going to add to the agenda, item number nine. It was by Mr. Starker, seconded by Ms. J. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The only thing I was going to mention is that under items three and four, they'll be held as one public hearing instead of two. So, Ms. Langworthy. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings and ordinances and second reading. Item one is Resolution Number 31-2013. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 31, 2013, a resolution approving a two-lot subdivision plot with a right-of-way dedication for property zone residential one located at 3785 Independence Street, case number MS 1303 Fox Hill. The applicant is requesting approval of a two-lot subdivision plot for property zone R1 and located at 3785 Independence. The purpose of their request is to create two lots, one lot for an existing home and a second for development of a new single-family home to the west.
I need to swear everybody in. If you're here to speak on item number one, please stand and raise your right hand for the public comment. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter, or say I do if you do? Thank you. We're going to move on to the staff report.
Thank you. For the record, Lauren Mikulak, planner with the city of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number MS 1303. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. We'll start this evening with an aerial. North is to the top of your screen, and the subject property is outlined here in blue. It's on the west side of Independence Street. Again, the request is to subdivide the property that's outlined in blue into two separate development lots. The site's just over a half an acre and size at 25,800 square feet, and there is, you can see, an existing single-family home in that northeast quadrant of the property that was constructed in 1950. Zooming out just a bit, this is an excerpt from the zoning map. Again, subject property is outlined in blue, and it is zoned residential one. That's a single-family zone district, and you can see that it's pretty well embedded in a residential neighborhood, so surrounded the north, south, and west sides by R1, and then residential two, which is located sort of to the east and northwest of the property in R2A. All residential zone districts. As council is aware, the case being heard tonight is only a subdivision of land, so creating another development parcel will not affect the zoning or the permitted uses on the property. So this is the proposed Fox Hill subdivision plot that will formally create those two parcels. This is the entire plot, which includes, excuse me, the standard notes and legal descriptions, but we'll zoom in to the core part of that plot. So outlined here, for clarity in blue, are the proposed parcel lines for the two lots. One parcel will be for the existing home on the northeast side, and the other parcel, which we call a flag lot, will be for the new development. The applicant hasn't determined if they'll develop the lot or they'll sell it for development, but it would be eligible for a single-family home. The existing home you can see in yellow, and then the sliver on the far right side of your screen, that red sliver, is indicating a narrow right-of-way dedication, so two and a half feet in width. Regarding the right-of-way dedication, Independence Street is identified in the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and so when new lots are created through the subdivision process, we review those bike-ped routes to see if they meet current standards, and in this case, Independence Street is slightly substandard, so that's the two and a half feet that's being dedicated. There is intermittent sidewalk along Independence, and for that reason, the applicant was given the choice of either constructing a sidewalk along this drainage or paying a fee in lieu, and he's chosen the latter. The last thing I want to point out, the table on the bottom is showing the minimum lot width and lot size requirements for the R1 zone district, and both of these lots do meet the minimum 100-foot width and 12,500-square-foot area. Just a quick photo of the site that might help to visualize that future arrangement. So the left side of your screen is going to be that 25-foot-wide drive that accesses the new lot, and then in the background, behind that white fence, would be the developable area for a new home. And finally, as part of the review process, we did send the application out on referral to the utility agencies, and they can serve the property. The Public Works Department has reviewed and approved the plot, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 15th and recommended approval of the application. Likewise, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision for the reasons that it meets the subdivision regulations, Article 4 in the zoning code, and it can be served by all the utility providers. And that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Would the applicant like to make a few statements before we move on to public comment? Okay, seeing that we'll move on to public comment, please step forward and go to the podium, and please address your comments to the city council, and please play your last name for the record and/or give us your address or city. Please step forward for public comment. If you're here to speak on, you can also line up behind this gentleman so we can keep things moving along.
My name is Rodney Pinckney, P-I-N-K-N-E-Y. I reside at 9665 West 37th Avenue, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. My subdivision borders my property on the north and is adjacent to it. Mr. Mayor, council, citizens of Wheat Ridge.
Sir, just address your comments to the council, since they're making the decisions. Please, thank you.
The, this is an honor for me to speak before you. It's also a milestone in my life. Today is my 80th birthday, and we have lived at 9665 West 37th Avenue for 51 years. We joined that property with my wife and three children back in 1962. We moved out of a high-density residence in North Denver and was looking for a place for our children to grow up in a more tenable fashion and have schools nearby. As our children matured, we also added to our property, to our home, to accommodate the privacy, since it was two girls and one boy. We've invested in landscaping and other property improvements to improve the aesthetics of the home. My goal today is to inform city council about my concerns regarding this Fox Hill subdivision. I want them to understand how the impact of this subdivision will maybe potentially decrease values of the properties in the subdivision. Neighbors in the subdivision have also expressed concerns that this subdivision would detract from the character of the neighborhood. Drainage is a major concern for all residences between Independence and 37th Avenue, along 37th Avenue and Johnson. It is a major drainage channel, has been there forever, and it still is active today, although it has been mitigated somewhat by a improvement by the city in the drainage in the area with a storm drain system run down Independence Street from 35th and across 38th down to Clear Creek. When we moved in there, it was in the wintertime, and so we did not recognize that there was any kind of a problem behind us, but in that summer, we discovered that we had a cattail pond back there, that's actually a swamp, and all of the properties to the east and southeast of us were draining down through that drainage channel, and it was running into our yard and through the property behind us. I contacted Jefferson County engineer in 1967 to see if there was anything that could be done about that drainage problem there. He did a survey, grade survey, and proposed a solution to it. That solution would be to fill in the low spots and cut a drainage channel all the way from Independence down to Johnson. That being the proposal, it would also require new easements from property owners along that channel. I held a meeting at my home to present what the county engineer had shown me. They suggest, the homeowners suggested that they would handle it themselves, and they did not want to turn over easements to the county. So it was left at that. County engineer then warned in a letter to me that anybody going back there and making any changes to that drainage channel without legal authorization would probably be in violation of Colorado water law. So that area has been and still is a major drainage channel for that region. The property owners behind me and next to me took it on their own to put in a channel and with concrete tile and connected it to a collection box on Independence Street, right at the start of the channel. The major storm inlet in the improvement now sits at that same spot, so that is the low spot, and it continues to have drainage. In fact, our little storm today even showed even more how that works, and the drainage or the gutter inlet right there at that point clogged up with leaves, and it overflowed and started running down the channel behind my property. My recommendation is that this subdivision application should be denied, because it's going to change the character of the West Haven subdivision and could possibly impact the current drainage situation. I think also that if this gets approved, that the residences in the neighborhood whose properties can be affected by the development of that new subdivision should also have input to the site planning process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please play your last name for the record, state your city or your address.
Good evening. My name is Ihor Figlus, F-I-G-L-U-S. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue, and I'm here to recommend the city council deny this application for subdivision. The neighborhood that's where this is being done is kind of in one of those oases that Wheat Ridge is famous for. We have spacious lots, and people who visit there comment about how nice it is around there, because it's quiet and it's not built up. All the homes in there are one-story homes. The change in this subdivision by subdividing this property will actually create a higher-density spot right at the entrance to our neighborhood, and also allows for construction up to 35 feet, which potentially means a three-story house going into an area which where only one-story homes are being built. The, I think this could have a negative impact on the real estate values and on the look of the whole neighborhood, as that Independence is one of the two main entrances into that particular area. The, as was stated by the staff, I believe that they're incorrect about the fact that this lot complies with, I mean, it does technically. It is over 12,500 square feet. However, if you take a look at that flagpole arrangement, you'll see that only about 9,800 square feet of that is actually buildable property. The rest of it is a driveway of 3,100 square feet that just is not used for anything except for a driveway. So you're going to be squeezing a house into a lot that's much smaller than most of the surrounding, most of the surrounding properties. The other thing is that this will create a precedent in the neighborhood for perhaps in the future, subdividing and building homes, and what is essentially a backyard of existing homes. The other thing is on, as far as being properly posted and properly noticed, I have photographs here from, that I took this morning, that have today's Denver Post on there. The requirements for posting a public hearing notice is that they should be 30 inches off the ground. I would like to submit these and show that the bottom of the sign is barely seven inches off the ground, and the top of it doesn't even reach the minimum requirement of 30 inches. Most of the neighbors that I've talked to the last couple of days, I myself only became aware of this problem, this subdivision, a couple of days ago. Most of the neighbors I spoke to had absolutely no idea that this was going on. The sign is not visible, and so I believe it's not properly posted, and that alone should be enough reason to either deny or postpone this decision. I don't know who I give these to.
Give it to the city clerk, and she'll pass them down.
And this also brings actually, brings up actually a question whether, I wasn't aware that there was a planning commission meeting on this, and so it actually brings up even a question whether the planning commission hearing was properly conducted, because notice, if it was posted in the same manner as this notice was posted, it was certainly not in a way that the public would have noticed and doesn't meet the minimum requirements. And so, once again, I recommend city council deny this request for subdivision.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Schaefer, S-H-A-F-E-R. I live at 9745 West 36th Avenue, and I'm here to oppose this matter. I believe that if this were approved, it would change the character of the neighborhood. What drew me there a good many decades ago was the size of the lots, and if we take this lot and divide it into two pieces, it will stand out as being different, and different in not a positive way, I think. I didn't really have the opportunity to figure out the numbers, each lot size, for instance, and I'll tell you why in a moment, but I do know that my own lots, and it's not one of the largest by any means, is a little over 18,000 square feet, and it's that type of a lot that has brought many of the neighbors there. It's that type of lot that causes them to stay. It's that type of lot that makes it so neighbors come and they stay, and they take an interest and participate, as I'm doing tonight. So I believe a change in lot size would be a serious issue to the character of the I've also traveled around and had a particular interest in houses and architecture, and I've seen a number of cases where a lot similar to this, a somewhat deeper-than-normal lot, has been divided and another house built behind it. I've never seen a case where that made a positive contribution to the neighborhood. Matter of fact, my observation, my subjective observation, is that generally, it's a negative influence. There's something that hurts the pride of the family in the back, or just something of tucking a house around behind another house where nobody ever... of tuck, of tucking a house around behind another house where nobody ever thought that was going to happen ends up, uh, as a, as a bad influence. And finally, I'm surprised to be speaking tonight because I didn't learn of this matter until this afternoon, late this afternoon. And I understand that there's a sign announcing this posted on Independence. Now, Independence is the street that I use to come and go to my home primarily and if I didn't see it, it's not very visible.
My name is Ronald Thomas. It's T-H-O-M-A-S. I reside in the home that's directly south of the lot in 4A. My concern is somewhat like Rod Pekn, Pekney's here. It's the drainage system, knowing that the driveway that they're going to be installing is going to be adjacent to my back fence. And today was proof that the water floodage problem, even after the storm drain improvements, which has proven, proven to be inadequate. And we did get just today flooding in our yard high enough that it did go in under my garage doors, which my garage is close to the area that they're going to be doing it. I guess I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to the home building back there, but my major concern is the, the water flooding situation and the fact that there would be a cement driveway along my backyard, which it already is a flood problem. And the lot that is there now is totally dirt, so it does have some absorption value now. Once they build a home and driveway and all that, it will increase that flow. We, our family and Cindy and Steve, our kids went to school together and everything and we understand why they want to do this. And I'm not necessarily opposed to them building the home. I'm just concerned that the water runoff. I went blank. But also according to Rod's recommendation, I would be really interested in seeing the plans for the home that they would be building and feel like I should have at least some input toward that, should this be approved.
My name is Odarka Figlus and I live at 10580 West 34th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. And I drive down Independence a lot because I go to visit my mom a lot, not as much as she'd like probably, but I do go down that street often. And I had no idea that there was a planning commission hearing and I had no idea that there was a public hearing until somebody, before city council, until somebody brought it to my attention and mentioned the lot and then I had to go look for the sign. The sign, as the pictures show, is very low and it's tilted and it, it just not, it does not stand out like you would want something to be noticed. And I think we would have a lot more neighbors here to speak about this today if they had been aware of this sooner. The other thing I wanted to say is the pictures that we saw of the outside of the property don't really tell, kind of give you the story of what the property might look like if it gets subdivided because essentially the house that's going to be built in the back is going to be built right adjacent to other people's backyards. So if you could please imagine your own house and if your neighbor socked in a, a house right up against your backyard, how that might feel. The lot size effectively is substandard for the area because so much of it is really just the flagpole driveway. And it's my understanding that it really is not going to be usable without a substantial variance, which the applicant apparently is going to be asking for. And I saw a little bit of the planning commission hearing on TV and I heard Mr. Trot, I think it was, say something to the effect of that they wanted to extract the economic value out of the property. I'm certainly not quoting their exact words, I'm just, uh, but in the area, there's been a lot of investment in that neighborhood and into houses, including substantial additions to houses. Mr. Schaefer, who spoke earlier, is one of the people that did that. A lot of people have done that. There's a new family moving in that's expanding their house considerably. And we're all investing in that neighborhood, but still maintaining the character of the neighborhood and working within the rules and not adversely impacting our other neighbors. The trouts could also get economic benefit from their property by doing the same thing, by staying with the rules, staying with the integrity of the neighborhood and improving their house, uh, within the standards and without subdividing. The other thing that, uh, it's been nice that Wheat Ridge has not had a lot of discord lately and you might know, I don't know if that was in your packet, that this subdivision, the West Haven subdivision, has covenants. And no doubt if this goes through, that there'll be a lot of lawsuits and discord and, in terms of enforcing the existing covenants and things like that. So I really urge you to please deny this motion for the above reasons. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Maria Figlus, 9775 West 36th Avenue. I am against subdivision. I am walking every day at least a mile or two in my neighborhood streets. I never saw any sign. Thank you.
Janice Gilmer, G-I-L-M-E-R, 9805 West 36th Avenue. I was not aware of the meeting this evening until notified later on this afternoon. I did not see the sign, although I drive down Independence every day. But I do agree also with other things that have been said by the previous parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment before I move on to council questions? Um, we'll move on to council discussion. Mr. Dahl, do you want to address the sign before we move on? The sign location and the height?
Sure. The, the code does require, among other things, that there be various forms of notice. Uh, and let me confirm both newspaper notice and letter notice for this. There are three forms of notice in the, in the code. Newspaper notice, letter notice, and posted notice. We've got evidence from the planning department that all three were, were, were accomplished. And we also have events that's been presented and I appreciate being presented that, that says that the sign was, was below the level. I'd offer the following thoughts. Deficiencies in notices of public hearings often come up in, in land use cases and there's a fair amount of case law determining whether or not a defective notice in one way or another means that the proceeding is defective. And I won't take too long giving you this lecture, but I understand that, that it's been, been put out there. Here, I would offer the following. The, the courts pretty universally say that the, the purpose of notice is to notify people and so long as it has, is substantially complied with, minor deficiencies in the notice are not enough to, to declare the proceedings invalid. Examples would be the notice is supposed to be published for seven days in a row and it's only six, or the notice there's a certain time window and it's off by a day. The size of the sign was smaller or a different size or shape. These would be considered, you know, items which, which don't go to the heart of the notice get, get sent. Now, I understand and appreciate you've got some testimony saying, gee, I was not aware. But there are a couple of other things going on. One, the three forms of notice and the evidence you have is the two of them, at least it's uncontested, the two of them were made without problems and the third one had this defect. Secondly, with respect even to that sign, that you have evidence that it was seen by people because you've got a photograph of it that's in evidence now. Third, the courts also basically take the position that that kind of defect is waived if in fact you show up at the hearing. It means that however you found out, you still found out and that the, the goal of a notice proceeding or a notice requirement is that people show up and testify. The fact that it was deficient, but they still showed up means that there's, as, as to them anyhow, there's a waiver because you, you showed up. So that on, on balance, I would say that that defect, given the other things I've described, is not fatal to your consideration of the, of the application. And when you consider all of the, it's up to you to decide, of course, but, but I can tell you that, that is how the courts would look at the, at the whole landscape of the notice that was granted here and the degree to which people showed up and attended the hearing.
Thanks. We'll move on to council questions, discussion. Ms. Davis?
So I guess one of my questions does go back to the drainage and the stormwater.
Sure.
Could you talk more about what, what the thoughts were and, and what's been done on reviewing that issue?
Yeah, we had the same concerns come up at the planning commission meeting, so we brought it back to Public Works. Um, and essentially, we don't have quite as much authority when it comes to new single family home, single and two-family homes as say a commercial development where we would require a drainage report and attention pond. Um, in the case of, in this example, so a single family home, what would happen typically if, if the plot was approved, the applicant could submit a site plan, they'd go straight to building permit. There's no public review for standard building permits as long as they meet the zoning code. So go to building permit and with that it'd get routed to our development review engineer and so he'd be looking to make sure that any new, obviously we'd be adding impervious surface, so that any new impervious surface wouldn't be dramatically affecting historic flows, that roof drains wouldn't be aimed at neighboring lots. They'd be looking at the grading that's proposed, but we don't, we don't have any requirements for drainage reports for single family homes. So we'd be looking at it sort of through our normal building permit process.
Mr. Starker?
Does the, does the topography at the site flow, flow east towards Independence?
It does, yeah. As, as Mr. Pinkney referred, there is, so the majority of the land in that area is sort of east of Kipling and even along Kipling is north-south, but there is along 37th from Independence all the way to Discovery Park, sort of an east-west pattern. That's the low, the low point in that otherwise northwest flow. So regionally, there is that pattern of, of water going east-west, sort of where the neighbors have indicated.
So it goes east to west?
I'm not sure which direction it goes, but there is sort of an east-west pattern in that area, yeah.
Could you bring back up the, um, the photograph from the street looking in?
And that's, that's the inlet too that they were referring to.
If, if you were behind the, behind the fence, would the flow typically be flowing away from you or towards you?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
You don't know?
Yeah, sorry.
Going west. Thank you.
Mr. Stites? Do you have a question?
I did, but Christie asked it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council, Mr. Reinhardt?
I was under the impression that the way we measured lot width was related to its proximity to the right-of-way and that that measurement of the, should have taken place off of Independence by, I don't recall, but a fairly fixed distance off Independence so that the lot, pipe stem lots in this zone district were precluded because they lacked lot frontage, street frontage as defined by the code. Could you explain to me why that doesn't apply to this situation?
Sure. Um, so we actually allow flaglots in any residential zone district, assuming it can meet the other standards. And the definition of the front lot line for a flaglot is the lot line that's parallel to the street, but not necessarily adjacent to it. So in this case, the lot width is measured back here, um, sort of behind the lot one and that's where it's 125 feet in width.
The, we permit flaglots in all of our residential zone districts?
Yes.
There's actually a provision in the zoning code that allows up to four flaglots that share a private drive, so we don't see a lot of these, but we do have occasion that they do occur.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Can I close the public hearing? Our motion's in order.
Before I get started here, I just want to say that we take an oath of office, that we have to uphold the laws and as long as someone has met the criteria, then we have to uphold that. And also there is, uh, the rights of a property owner. And with that being said, I move to approve resolution number 312013, a resolution approving a two-lot subdivision plat with the right-of-way dedication for property zoned R1 located at 3875 Independence Street for the following reasons. One, city, city council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by section 26 109 and 26 407 of the Code of Laws. The requested subdivision has been reviewed by the planning commission, which has forwarded its recommendations. Three, the subdivision plot has been found in compliance with article four of chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. Four, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed in the developer's expense and with the following condition. One, fees in lieu of streetscape improvement be provided prior to recording the plat. And two, fees in lieu of parkland dedication be provided prior to recording the plat.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion to approve item number one. It was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion. Ms. Jay?
The only discussion I have, thank you, is that without a site plan, it doesn't really matter. What, what I'm thinking is whether we had a site plan or not, we still would have to fo, to follow the, the separation because, excuse me, the, the division of two, because that is our, legally what we're being asked to do. However, when that site plan comes in, it would seem to me that there would be some recourse for the homeowners to, there might be a board of adjustment, you know, request because the, still the space back there is, is fairly small to be putting in any kind of a large piece of property. So there may be a board of adjustment, uh, hearing, which would be helpful to the neighbors. I do agree, I, I feel like I have to vote for this, but I do agree that that type of a situation is never particularly attractive as far as putting another place back there. That's all.
Any other comments?
I just want to point out that while I'm uncomfortable with the height of the sign, I think notice is critical. I think in this situation, um, the, the remedy would probably be to defer the action and allow the reposting and I don't think that would be likely to change the outcome since the, seems to comply with the law as a subdivision, so, um, I just think it's worth noting that that outcome would simply delay, but not change the overall, my approach to the overall program, so I will be supporting this.
Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries four to two with council members Starker and Langworthy voting no.
Thank you for coming tonight. We're going to take a five-minute break. I gotta, I'll be right back. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting. I wanted to mention that it was a five-to-two vote, not a four-to-two, Ms. Shaver. I think you said motion carried four-to-two for the record. So we'll move on to item number two, which is resolution 33-2013. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 33-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with a Taste of Home Cooking LLC and Wine Not LLC for participation in the enhanced sales tax incentive program, rebating 50% of the enhanced sales tax for a period of five years for the construction of a restaurant and wine bar at 4101 and 4111 Kipling Street in an amount not to exceed $73,694. Excuse me. At the August 26, 2013 special study session, city council reviewed a request from a Taste of Home Cooking LLC and Wine Not LLC for an S-DEP agreement wherein all or portion of a sales tax increment would be rebated back to the applicant. City council discussed the request and directed staff to draft an S-DEP agreement to rebate 50% of future sales tax increment for a period of five years in an amount not to exceed $73,694.
Thank you. Was there any staff report on item number two? Okay. Is there applicant here to speak? If you wish? Nope? Okay. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number two? Seeing that, we'll move on to council discussion or questions. Seeing that, close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
Thank you. I move to approve resolution number 33-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with a Taste of Home Cooking LLC and Wine Not LLC for participation in the S-DEP, rebating 50% of the enhanced sales tax for a period of five years for the construction of a restaurant and wine bar at 4101 and 4111 Kipling Street in an amount not to exceed $73,000, start over, $73,694.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two, a second by Ms. Davis. Please poll the council. Thank you. We'll move on to items three and four. I'm gonna... Item three is resolution 35-2013, and resolution... Item four is resolution 34-2013. I'm gonna open the public hearings. Ms. Langworthy?
Resolution number 35-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Musel Master the Green Herb for participation in the enhanced sales tax incentive program, S-DEP, rebating 50% of the enhanced sales tax for a period of three years for construction of a new building at 4565 Kipling Street. Musel Master the Green Herb has made an application and request to participate in the city's enhanced sales tax incentive program, E-DEP, related to the construction of a new building to house the corporate headquarters of the Green Herb at 4565 Kipling Street. The request is for the rebate of 50% of the future sales tax increment for a period of three years for an estimated amount of $7,500. And resolution number 34-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Musel Master the Green Herb to participate in the Wheat Ridge Business Development Zone Program for a rebate of 100% of the eligible use tax in association with the construction of a new building at 4565 Kipling Street in Wheat Ridge. Musel Master the Green Herb has made application and request to participate in the city's Business Development Zone BDZ program related to the construction of a new building for its corporate headquarters at 4565 Kipling Street. The request is for the rebate of 100% of the eligible use tax for an estimated total of $13,500.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation beyond the executive summary? The applicant, do you want to say a few words?
Well, it's Musel. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'll put it on the board and spell your last name for the record of the podium.
I knew I should have asked in advance.
I'm Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S, and it's Musel M-U-S-C-L, it's the E-L, Master LLC.
Put the mic up a little bit, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anyway, that's... I just wanted to correct the name. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item numbers three or four? Seeing that, we'll go to council questions or discussion. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing, and two motions are in order.
I move to approve resolution number 35-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Musel Master for the participation in the enhanced sales tax incentive program, rebating 50% of the enhanced sales tax for a period of three years for the construction of a new building at 4565 Kipling Street in an amount estimated at $7,500. And I further move to approve resolution number 34-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for Musel Master to participate in the Wheat Ridge Business Development Zone Program for a rebate of 100% of the eligible use tax in association with the construction of a new building at 4565 Kipling Street in Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve resolution 35, number 35-2013. I'm sorry, 33. Let me just look here.
Yeah, you need two motions. Was your motion for both?
Yes.
I'd appreciate if you'd take individual motions, since they're two...
Well, she made a motion for...
If you can correct your motion to be the first resolution, then we'll... Which is 35, I think, then we'll have you do it again.
Okay, so I corrected my motion to just include the first motion.
Resolution number 35.
35.
Is that okay with a second?
Second.
So we're voting only on resolution 35, item number three. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
I move to approve resolution number 34-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for Musel Master to participate in the Wheat Ridge Business Development Zone Program for a rebate of 100% of the eligible use tax in association with the construction of a new building at 4565 Kipling Street in Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion to approve item number four, was seconded by Mr. Demott. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. Item five is council bill 13-2013. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce item number five, council bill number 13-2013, in ordinance submitting chapter 11 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws by adding a new article 13 concerning retail marijuana and making certain amendments to chapter 26, zoning and development, in association therewith. At issuing this matter, on November 6, 2012, the people of the state of Colorado adopted amendment 64, which amended the Colorado Constitution by adding article 18, section 16 thereto concerning the legalization of the recreational use of marijuana. Amendment 64 also authorized the licensing by state and local authorities of businesses that cultivate, manufacture, and test marijuana and marijuana products for retail sale. The amendment fixed certain dates by which the state had to act to implement the licensing of retail marijuana establishments. The state has met those dates thus far. On March 11, 2013, council adopted ordinance 1533, series 2013, which enacted a moratorium on the issuance or consideration of any city license or permit concerning retail marijuana establishments and marijuana clubs, locations permitting onsite consumption or use of marijuana. In May of this year, the general assembly, through House Bill 13-1317, enacted by Colorado, enacted the Colorado Retail Marijuana Code, CRS 12-43.4-101 et cec., which authorized the state to license and regulate the sale, distribution, cultivation, growth, manufacture, and testing of retail marijuana and retail marijuana products throughout the state. The code named the Colorado Department of Revenue as the state licensing authority and further authorized that department to adopt rules that would further implement provisions of the code. The DOR has adopted emergency rules that should be finalized in October of this year. The attached ordinance regulates and licenses retail marijuana businesses seeking to operate in the city and establishes the appropriate zoning for those businesses. The provisions in this ordinance are consistent with state law.
Mr. Duddell?
I realize you don't take comment on first reading, and I just wanted to address the effective date on the ordinance. We have the standard 15 days after final publication, but as you probably know, the state legislation says the local governments need to have their systems in place by October 1. Now, the truth is that there will be no sales until January the 1st, and the state is still... It's probably lagging behind local governments in getting the marijuana enforcement division really up and running, but in the interest of having our ordinance in place before October the 1st, since you'll see this on second reading still here in September, and the charter allows ordinances to be effective upon final adoption, I'd appreciate if you would alter whoever's gonna make the motion right at the end that says it shall take effect 15 days after final publication, just to change it to say, and that shall take effect upon final adoption as provided by the charter, since the charter allows that. Thank you.
So moved.
Well, he hasn't read a motion yet.
Just put it in your... The motion for approval of the ordinance on first reading.
Starker, motion's in order.
I move to approve council bill number 13-2013, in ordinance submitting chapter 11 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws by adding a new article 13 concerning retail marijuana and making certain amendments to chapter 26, zoning and development, in association therewith. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, September 23, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that it take effect upon final adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number five, and it was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries five to two with council members Langworthy and Jay voting no.
Okay, next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item six is resolution 32-2013. Ms. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 32-2013, a resolution approving the city of Wheat Ridge Coyote Management Plan. The city of Wheat Ridge has developed a coyote management plan to provide information on how to safely coexist with coyotes by utilizing educational programs and providing guidelines and standards in the response to and reporting of human coyote conflicts. The plan requires active participation from the committee, the community, in utilizing proven methods to modify the behaviors of coyotes. Skipping to the last line, "The city utilizes educational outreach as the primary tool in managing human coyote conflicts, but recognizes that there are situations where immediate lethal control may be necessary."
Motion's in order.
I move to approve resolution number 32-2013, resolution approving the city of Wheat Ridge Coyote Management Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number six, was seconded by Ms. Langworthy. Do we have Ms. Champion, did you want to speak on this? Please step forward, onto the podium. Now please spell your last name for the record.
Champion, C-H-A-M-P-I-O-N. I am here not only as an animal welfare commissioner, but as a 33-year resident of Wheat Ridge, and a responsible pet owner, and an advocate for the welfare and humane treatment of all animals. The Coyote Management Plan is very detailed, especially pages one through five. However, it goes through very specific definitions of the coyote, their behavior, our interactions with them. On page six, it speaks to the authority of the city to take action regarding aggressive coyotes, ones that they feel are a danger to humans. It briefly discusses amendment 14, which was a citizen initiative that passed by 52% of the Colorado voters banning leg-hole traps in 1996. It also speaks to the exemption that was given to the Colorado Parks and Wildlife in the event of aggressive coyotes, ones that they deemed dangerous to humans. On page seven, it defines humane traps. It states that leg-hole traps, snares, are specifically excluded from this definition. On page eight, number three, it says, "Community service officers are authorized to use firearms, tranquilizer guns, humane traps." Number four, it says, "It is unlawful for any person to set or cause to set within the city a leg-hole trap, snare, or any trap other than a humane trap." C talks about using the most humane and appropriate means. D talks about when a humane trap is used and the intent of the community service officers' police department to monitor those traps in the event that they have the time, basically. It states that no leg-hole traps or other inhumane traps will be used. However, on November 9 of last year, a leg-hole trap was used on 38th Street for a coyote that was deemed aggressive and a danger to humans. Now, lest people don't realize what a leg-hole trap is, this is an older version, and certainly I could open it, demonstrate it for you, but it has its own reputation in terms of its brutality and the suffering that it could cause. Now, this trap is not... is non-discriminate. It doesn't care whether it is getting the coyote that is targeted, whether it's a bunny, a raccoon... a raccoon, your beloved pet. Today is a great example of how animals, beloved pets, can get out. When you have a storm like we had, they can easily jump a fence, dig under whatever, and be frantically running amok. It could easily get caught in this. Now, if that happens, where in this plan does it talk about the procedure to deal with that? If they find, number one, if it's, I don't think that even though there is intent, that we probably would have a very swift check of this trap, because we had many, many other things going on, flooding, accidents, it just wouldn't happen. What would happen to this animal that's in this trap, once they did find it? If it's someone's pet, who's responsible for the treatment? Is it taken to a local hospital? Is it taken to the shelter? Where then we have to again, address whose responsibility is it? There are so many things here that are not addressed. This is not a simple piece of equipment, and I think it deserves very specific measurable policies in its use. The Coyote Management Plan, as it's stated, appears to say that this will not be used. I am asking, and I understand that there are times when these coyotes need to be trapped, euthanized, and I understand the plight of the CSO's officers, you know, trying to accomplish that task. However, I don't understand why, in the event that, you know, we, the same department every day deals with very measurable things that they enforce in their laws. We should have something, again, that is measurable, specific for the use of this kind of equipment. There are leg hole traps as an option that have a waxy substance that covers the jaws of the trap, that has a sedative. It also has an alarm on it. When that alarm, when that trap goes off, it sends a signal to someone with a cellphone. That person can immediately come and either euthanize the animal, especially if they see that it is the targeted animal. But if not, there should be, again, a procedure in place that says, what do we do with this animal that's been caught? And I'd like to ask, what is your comfort level of intent? When we have a storm like this, and we know that there are many animals that could possibly end up in this trap? What's your level of comfort with someone saying, our intent is, if there's nothing else going on that requires our attention, we will check out this trap? What do you think the intent, or the level of comfort would be with Wheat Ridge citizenry? I don't think that they understand that this is in use. I'm just asking that you postpone this motion, this plan, until we have something more specific that deals with other questions that have not been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve, it was seconded, discussion? Stites?
I can understand what Ms. Champion said, because there is, how often do we, of course, you don't know, but like those leg traps and stuff, how often would you think they were set out during the year? Once, twice?
The only time that I'm aware of that we've, that a leg trap has been used was by the Division of Wildlife to trap a coyote that had attacked a woman's pet or chicken, and then got aggressive to her when she was unloading her groceries. Our ordinance, our municipal ordinance, is pretty specific about what a humane trap is, and what it isn't, and what can be used, and what can't be used. We've listened to what the Animal Welfare Commission has requested in regards to changes. We've made those changes, addressed those. This plan was approved by the majority of the Animal Welfare Commission, you know, as it's written. I certainly understand Ms. Champion's concern about traps being used and monitored, and, you know, our intent is to monitor those as we can, but we're not going to be able to put a, you know, officer or CSO in direct observation of a trap. We'll check traps as frequently as we can, but the trap that she shown is not a trap that, you know, our code allows us to use. Thank you.
Ms. Jay?
Are you saying we do not use leg traps? Yeah?
Yeah, we use a humane leg trap. It's, it's got rubber jaws.
Okay.
And what it does is it holds the leg.
Okay.
And it's listed as a humane trap by city ordinance by code.
I am curious, on the page, referred to page seven, it refers to the City of Wheat Ridge Municipal Code, item number three, humane trap includes any trap which does not cause physical injury, pain, or suffering of a trapped animal. But then it says steel log gib, excuse me, steel jaw leg hold traps and snares are specifically excluded from this definition. But the city shall not be precluded from determining that any other type of trap is also excluded from this definition. Is that referring to the state? Because it, we are under the state authority, Colorado revised statutes, but then it moves to City of Wheat Ridge Municipal Code. Could you clear that up for me?
The way it reads is that snares and steel jawed traps are excluded from the definition of being humane. It's not a humane trap. And we don't use those. Now, Department of Wildlife, or I should say Colorado Parks and Wildlife, can choose to use those if they choose to, but our ordinance in Wheat Ridge would prohibit that.
All right. I'm comfortable if we are prohibited from using steel traps.
Mr. Starker?
The way that I read this, in section two, two G subsection four, I read that to say, "It shall be unlawful for any person to set or cause to be set within the city any steel legged trap hold, snare, or any trap other than a humane trap for the purpose of capturing any animal, whether wild or domestic." So I think it's pretty clear that steel jawed leg traps are specifically excluded, and in the definition, they're specifically excluded from being a humane trap.
Okay.
So, I, you know, I appreciate Ms.
Yeah, I saw section four.
Ms. Champion's issue, and I think it's very well, very well done, but I'll be honest with you, I think it's pretty crystal clear, you can't use steel legged traps in the City of Wheat Ridge. Period.
Mr. Demott?
That, that was gonna, you know, it is, it was confusing the first time I read it too, but it, you know, from what I understand is, in section two, C subsection three, where it's specifically excluding from the definition of a humane trap.
Right.
So, where, the first time I read that, it seemed like it was the other way around, but after I read it a couple of times, I understand that. But on the, do we use any monitored type of trap?
We do not have, we don't have that kind of equipment, and, you know, the signal type, you can send a signal to a cellphone with an alarm. We've looked into the pricing on that, and it's, it's kind of cost prohibitive for the times that we would do that. As the chief said, I, certainly in the last eight years, we've done this one time. It's not going to be a frequent event. If it were, we might come back to council and request that kind of budgetary cost, but I, in the meantime, we can, if the situation were to come up, as we've said in our policy manual, in the Police Department Policy Manual, we would try to see if another agency has that kind of equipment and borrow it. It wouldn't make a lot of sense to buy it and have it sit on a shelf and not be used, as it is pretty expensive.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve item number six, was seconded, please poll the council
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item seven, Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce item number seven. This is a motion to approve payment to Insight Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, fifty-one cents for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. At issuing this matter, this is a scheduled and budgeted replacement of obsolete Microsoft software licenses at all municipal facilities, and the support and maintenance that is inherent with upgrades or new software. The annual renewal of licensing and support will cost fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, fifty-one cents, which was approved in the two thousand and thirteen Information Technology IT Budget.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve payment to Insight Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, fifty-one cents for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number seven, it was seconded by Mr. Demott, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item eight is resolution thirty-six dash two thousand and thirteen. Mr. Stites?
I'd like to introduce resolution number thirty-six, twenty thirteen, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and Renewal Wheat Ridge to provide funding for the purchase of certain property. Renewal Wheat Ridge is in the process of entering into a purchase agreement with the Bank of Denver to acquire property located at seventy-six ninety West Thirty-Eighth Avenue and thirty-seven ninety Yukon Court. The acquisition of this property is critical to the success of a redevelopment at the vital commercial center in Wheat Ridge. This intergovernmental agreement provides the funding for the acquisition of the property. Acquisition by Renewal Wheat Ridge is necessary because property contains environmental contamination for which remediation is required. The Bank of Denver has been willing to work with City and Renewal Wheat Ridge, understanding that the property requires remediation, and is intended ultimately to be conveyed by Renewal Wheat Ridge to a third party, the developer of the redevelopment project. Thus, the transaction contemplates Renewal Wheat Ridge acquiring the property obtained a no further action determination letter from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and then conveying the property to the redeveloper. The purchase price is three hundred and ninety thousand, the cost of which is being contributed by the city in accordance with the terms of the IGA. However, the seller has agreed to contribute up to the amount of fifty thousand dollars for environmental remediation as set off from the purchase price. The staff of the City and Renewal Wheat Ridge are working with the city's environmental consultant and the CDPHE to determine the cost of the remediation plan that is acceptable to CDPHE, and will result in the issuance of a NAD. If the cost of the remediation is fifty thousand or less, staff would recommend proceeding forward with the transaction. If the cost is in excess of fifty thousand, staff will have to evaluate how best to proceed and seek City Council direction, as well as, since the city is ultimately funding the source of the acquisition, and would have to fund any additional remediation cost. I can't say that for means. Approving this IGA does not commit the city to funding this property acquisition. The critical date for purposes of determining by nature and extent of the environmental remediation, there you go, is September eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen. By this date, Renewal Wheat Ridge will be required to give notice to the seller regarding the required environmental remediation, the estimated cost of the acquisition of the property will proceed.
Okay. Motion's in order. Motion's in order.
Okay. I move to approve resolution number thirty-six, twenty thirteen, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and Renewal Wheat Ridge to provide funding for the purchase of certain property.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number eight, it was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt, discussion on the main motion? Mr. Starker?
Mr. Goff?
Yes, sir.
We're looking to purchase a piece of property here on Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
Correct.
Do we have a, do we have a buyer that's committed to buy this property from the city?
We potentially do. We're working with a developer who is, has a conceptual site plan in with the city for the property adjacent to this property. I believe they're actually in the audience this evening, if you'd like to ask any questions of them. We've met with them last week to discuss moving forward on agreement to purchase the property from the Urban Renewal Authority. This piece of property, if you remember in some of our former discussions, is crucial to the redevelopment of the site that the developer and the audience is working on because of the access point through this Bank of Denver property off of Yukon Court. If, we've been told several times by the developer that if they cannot achieve an access point through this property to Yukon Court, they won't be able to develop their property.
Would we be able to get a sales agreement for this, if we were to purchase it and move forward with the purchase?
We would. We're working on that, and we will, we're still working on putting together costs for remediation. Our family environmental, who's working with us, finished their last testing last week. They're putting together a cost summary, which we will bring back to City Council, probably on the study session of September twenty-third, to discuss further.
Any other questions or comments on item number eight?
If I may ask a question? The actual testing is being covered by the, was that an EPA Bronfield's agreement, uh, grant?
Correct. Yeah, correct, thank you. The city received a grant from the EPA for four hundred thousand dollars to conduct Phase One and Two Environmental Assessments of Property in the city. It also covers costs for cleanup plans, which we'll have to, we'll have to create for this project also.
So, that grant could cover some cleanup plant plans?
It won't cover any cleanup, actual cleanup, but it covers the cost of putting together a plan, which
Okay.
we're required to do to present to the state.
Got it.
Before they will sign off on that remediation.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have a motion to approve, it was seconded, please poll the council?
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item nine, Mr. Starker?
Your investigation?
We received a confidential report from Mr. Doll's office concerning an investigation that he had, that we had directed him to initiate into, as a result of a complaint by Councilmember Demott. And I wanted to, I guess first, I'd like to make a motion to make that report available to the public.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
You have a motion to make the confidential report public, it was seconded by Ms. Langworthy and Ms. Davis? Ms. Jay?
On this motion, as you might recall, I asked Councilmember Reinhardt to abstain from the motion that directed the report to be created, and while it's a closer case, I've thought carefully about it, and I believe still that Councilmember Reinhardt should abstain from voting on a motion to release the report, because the report, in part, addresses his actions. And so I would ask that he abstain from this vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Doll, are you saying that I don't have the opportunity, having been publicly asked to investigate, to participate in asking that that be made public? Are you saying I have no rights for public disclosure after being publicly charged with something?
Well, I'm saying that as, as the, as a council member, whose actions are the subject of earlier motion, that I advised, and I think you agreed, on the earlier motion, that to initiate the report.
Wow.
It was, it was appropriate. it was appropriate for you to abstain. And I mean, I absolutely understand the severity of your concern. I want to take my time to explain why. I really do. Even though it's appealing.
I understand the logic that being asked to vote on an investigation myself is inappropriate, but to be, I'm a member of this council and as such, the property of this council, whether it's confidential or not, seems to me that I haven't given up my rights there. There's no, I'm not prejudiced in any way in the discretion as to whether this is a public matter or not.
Well, all I can do is advise whether I believe you should abstain. As I've told the council on several occasions in the past, not issued a badge or a gun and I can't, you know, I can't require you to abstain. But I thought carefully about whether in asking that you abstain on creating the report or on initiating the investigation, well, hear me out. I mean, that whether the question of disclosing the results of that report was any different than the question of creating it.
I completely disagree with you. They're unrelated.
And I hear that. I appreciate it. And as I've said, all I can do is advise and I can't command any council member to vote yes, no, or to abstain. And so I take it that you will vote and I, you know, I've given counsel the advice. I believe that the vote, whatever it is, will be a valid action of the council whether or not you do abstain.
Thank you.
Was there a motion and a second?
We had a second. Yeah, Ms. Davis and Ms. Jay seconded and we had a motion to release the report. Please poll the council on the motion.
Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
I would like to formally abstain on advice of council.
Did you record the vote as one abstention? I will. Okay, Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that the report is part of the public record, I would like to just acknowledge that the report has, I thought Mr. Dahl was very well prepared by your consultant. It had certainly a lot of interviews and I thought that the questions that were asked were cogent to the scope of the investigation. I thought the answers that were given were truthful and credible by all of the people that participated in it. And I would like to provide my observation that there was no recommendation by the investigator that there had been any wrongdoing on the part of Mr. Reinhardt or Mr. Goff and just let it go with my thanks.
Mr. Dahl?
Thank you. I appreciate your releasing the report. I think it's the proper thing to do. And you have received from me an email cover note that's an attorney-client privileged document. But now that you've released the report, I'm perfectly comfortable, among other things, telling you that that I appreciated the work of Mr. Light. He is well-respected and I think those of you that had the opportunity to speak with him probably understood that and hopefully he communicated that to you. I think he did a good job on the report as well. My email cover note said that, you know, he has made some conclusions in his report and I've told you on the email cover note that I agree with those conclusions. And it was my recommendation based upon the report that no further action is necessary with respect to Mr. Goff or Mr. Reinhardt. You can certainly have a conversation about that, but that's my recommendation. And if you want to talk about what other options you have, that's my job too, to advise you. The one thing that I did suggest, and you saw that in my cover note as well, was that there are a couple of aspects of Code Section twenty-two dash fifty that in my opinion, based only in part upon the report, could benefit from change. One is to refine a little better, frankly, to whom tax information is to be distributed and for exactly what purposes. I think based upon reading the report, you kind of get the sense of, you know, why aggregate data is usually provided. And secondly, something that really wasn't raised by this report, but there's an independent need to change this code to make clear, as I think I put in my cover note, that disclosure to law enforcement is expressly permitted. You don't see that in there. And we've had some recent experience that tells me that that really ought to be a safe harbor for our city staff. If they see something they believe violates, that needs to be brought to the attention of law enforcement, they ought to be able to do that and not have to worry about a non-disclosure requirement in the code. So for that reason, I'd like to be able to bring forward a minor mem to Code Section twenty-two dash fifty that addresses both of those issues. And that is usually a consensus of the council to direct me to bring that forward. I'll write it up and we can bring it to study session or just first reading as you wish.
And do you like to make that as a motion to bring that information forward?
I would like to make that as a motion to bring that forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to bring back some code changes for first reading or for study session?
For first reading. I think it's simple enough. Yeah.
Regarding sales tax information, it was seconded by Ms. Davis. Discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
I didn't. I apologize. Revote. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to City Managers Matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like the council to know that you will be receiving the proposed two thousand fourteen budget tomorrow for our discussion on that next Monday evening. And it will also then be available to the public. So if anybody in the public would like to view it, we'll have a copy here at the City. It'll also be on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. City Attorneys Matters? City Clerks Matters?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Wasn't expecting it to be my turn already. Yes, I'd like to, I wrote something up and I'd like to discuss it. I want to acknowledge that it was two years ago that I began my journey as a council member and it began with a campaign. I spent my evenings after work and weekends knocking on doors of my district, meeting with people and discussing our vision of our city. I was outside the ring of city politics and for that I'm thankful, being a part of it now. I feel that regardless of positions we hold as elected officials, we all need to own the actions of our city. Our role as elected official is to represent our community, their wishes and best interests. We have three elected officials who do not vote regularly, if at all, the mayor, city clerk and treasurer. I believe these positions do represent our community and are part of the process. They all have a voice and can guide, lead and work with the council on the matters of our city. It is in the spirit, in this spirit, that I would like to address the mayoral veto of Ordinance Number fifteen forty-two, the ballot question to increase sales and use tax. I'm really disappointed that this was vetoed and more so on how it was vetoed. At no time did Mayor DeTulio voice any concern about this ballot question. The issue was first discussed at our annual retreat, which the mayor was unable to attend. We then went to the next study session to discuss the ballot question and asked for support and feedback as we wanted to be sure if we put such an important item on the ballot that we do it united as a group. At no point was there any strong dissension from the mayor. In fact, my recollection of his comments were more of how to successfully educate the voters on the ballot questions to ensure its success. The mayor had several weeks, even months, to voice his concerns regarding this ballot question and he had said nothing. We could have discussed and addressed his concerns in advance of the vote to understand his position and work together to draft a ballot question that we all could have strongly supported. And we would have had, and we would have, as it only, a couple of months ago, he asked the council to communicate and compromise over handicap parking fines rather than just vote it down and we did just that. We compromised. With his veto of Ordinance fifteen forty-two, he has done precisely what he asked us not to do. Asking for listening and compromise is even pointed out in the eighth bullet of the veto. I'm just curious why this has not been done by the mayor as well. This veto was not done on the dais or in open session when we could discuss in person the mayor's objections. It was done after the meeting and very close to the deadline of getting the ballot questions into the county. As council, we could have held a special meeting to override this veto and we know we had the numbers. However, as I just said above, we wanted to do this in a united fashion and present it to the community in a positive manner, not a they versus we fashion. I just don't understand. I could go on for hours and discuss the memo outlining the reasons for the veto, but I believe our council, other council members will be doing this as well. I would just like to point out a couple items. In one section, the mayor quotes a survey that he conducted. I would like to comment that the survey was three hundred and eighteen people. That is about one percent of the Wheat Ridge population. Any and all statisticians would find this survey statistically insignificant. Now, those three, three hundred and eighteen people are important and need to be heard. Their opinions can be reviewed and discussed, but such a small sample size should not be grounds to base a veto. Instead, the mayor should have asked for the results of this survey to be at a study session as an agenda item for us to discuss. This is a place where an elected official without a regular vote could have influenced and shared ideas with the council when we could have then acted altogether, rather than just put it in a newspaper and use it as flimsy ammunition in a veto. In the same bullet, he stated that six hundred and fifteen thousand was spent on the road diet and that the council, and I believe it should read elected officials, has lost the trust of the people. A couple thoughts on that. Actually, the narrowing of the street costs about fifty percent of that six hundred and fifteen thousand. The remaining was spent on pop-up cafes, marketing activities, et cetera. Now, right or wrong on the expenditures, I believe the numbers need to be honest and not sensationalized. More importantly, this trust the mayor states that was lost during the past two years, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue road diet was actually voted on at the last meeting of the outgoing council. So the new council, three new members and two members voting nay, did not vote on the Thirty-Eighth Avenue road diet. My question goes back to two years ago. How could compromise and leadership have changed that situation so that the current council could have voted on the program that they had to implement? As you can guess, I could continue, but I think in conclusion, I just want to voice my disappointment in this veto. As the mayor is always asking for listening and compromise from us, he failed to do the same. More importantly, why does he not allow the people to veto the sales tax increase by voting no on the ballot? The council, and in this case I do mean council, wanted to get the voice of the people and put this out for a vote. It is unfortunate that one person made a decision for an entire city. Going back to my opening statements, I do feel it is important to hear the voice of our community and I look forward to working with you over the next two years. I continue to be honored to meet the members of our community and listen to your voice and vision. Thank you.
Mr. Demott? Nothing tonight. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember George Pond was not able to be here tonight, but he asked me to read this piece of correspondence on the tax veto. I am sorry I was unable to attend the meeting this evening in my absence and have asked this statement to be read. There's a lot wrong with this veto. Not the least is the fact that it allows one voice to preempt the voice of thirty thousand. This alone is enough to condemn this action as wrong. Sadly, there is more to be concerned with. The communication of this veto stands as a dangerous outline of politics and principle that this city cannot afford to allow without raising our voice. Here are the important policy points and underlying principles highlighted in the memorandum. Residential and retail. There is reference to a theory that retail follows residential and therefore city funds should be used to improve residential housing stock through public-private partnerships. This point is ill-conceived on two levels. First of all, it presupposes that the city is not currently interested in improving the residential quality of our community. That's just not true. Secondly, it is extremely inefficient to try to make a difference, difference house by house. In actuality, residential improvements will flourish as the demand to live in our community increases. Over and over again, in the greater community surrounding Wheat Ridge, residential has followed the perceived quality of life in a community. We must ask ourselves, will we have the means and the wherewithal to provide a quality community that people demand? A key foundation fostering this demand is the city maintaining the community infrastructure, encouraging high-quality development and providing high-quality services. The ballot measure absolutely addresses these issues. Thirty-Eighth Avenue. It is inappropriate to hold up a statistically deficient survey as the sole indication that the efforts to revitalize Thirty-Eighth Avenue have been wasteful. It is also ignorant of the context and purpose of the work on Thirty-Eighth. That is that the corridor has been in a state of urban decay and within this context, the goal is to create an identifiable Main Street with vibrant and viable businesses and beautiful and useful pedestrian spaces. Has the goal been reached? Is everything beautiful right now? Understandably, no. However, all of these moves are part of a larger trajectory to change the street and the image of our community. It is undeniable that taken as a whole, the street is no longer in a state of decay and that positive change is occurring at a phenomenal rate. The important work and careful consideration of all of these moves has been going on for some time. Over multiple city council, it is flatly not true that this work has not involved listening, compromise and forethought. And moreover, it is grossly out of touch with reality. Priority-based budgeting. It is irresponsible to encourage the perception that there are abundant resources just waiting to be used and suggest that this council and city staff have not performed due diligence in regards to the annual budget. Every year, the resources and expenditures are considered and debated. The budget belt is tightened and this city operates in a responsible way. Is there room for improvement? Of course. And that is the intent of priority-based budgeting. However, to casually suggest that the council has not lived up to its fiduciary responsibility is an insult and to imply that there is an endless supply of three million dollar budget cuts is wrong. A prudent reserve. It is incorrect to suggest that the current reserve creates an artificial shortfall of funds. The council has already discussed the opinion of the option of allowing the current reserves to be spent down to seventeen percent, which is the lowest level suggested while still being prudent. Once that money is spent down, it is gone. So it will help for the short term, however. It will not have a year-over-year impact on the budget beyond a couple of years and it certainly does not represent anything artificial. There has been no indication that the short-term gains of spending the reserves down to eight percent would help in the long term, let alone be prudent. So in my opinion, this veto has taken away the voice of the people and the outline for our community that is contemplated in the memorandum is among other things, ill-conceived in its basis, inefficient in its proposed execution, ignorant of context, irresponsible, inaccurate and imprudent. Should this be acceptable as a foundation for change? Should these things be the basis of our policies? Are these the principles of our community moving forward? No, no and no.
Mr. Steitz?
This is the small voice of our community. It is time for our large voice to show up. I implore you to commit your time and energy to moving this community forward, not backward. I beg you to find your large voice and fight for the big ideas that this city deserves. This city faces a moment of truth. We will resolve to move prudently into a future that we shaped together or we would go blindly back to a dysfunctional past. I suppose that it may seem convenient and safe for me to share these views by proxy in the form of a letter. It is not meant to be either. So moving forward, I promise that I will continue to bring these points to the dais in person, week after week. Sincerely yours, George Pond.
And just on a personal note from myself, since that was by Mr. Pond, I had hoped that we would be as a community and a city council in a position that we would be able to bring ideas to the public that in the motion that we had put forth in the city council to seek really a dialogue. This was to seek a dialogue with our citizens that will address the fiscal and financial health of our city. I think that's a noble goal. I'm disappointed that we're not going to produce that in this election, but I will work tirelessly with my other counselors and other leaders in our community to see if we can understand the issues that we face and move forward.
we can understand the issues that, that we face and move forward together. Thank you.
Mr. Steitz?
Sorry, I don't have a letter or editorial to read, so I'm going to start with some good news. Why Not, which is just opening up on Kipling down there. I think it is September thirteenth or sixteenth, we'll be on Dinner, Dinners and Dives, that show on Comcast, I think it's channel seventy-four, and so you might look for that. Also, Davies Truck Wagon has a grand opening party, that's at ten one five one West Twenty-Sixth Avenue, Saturday, September fourteenth. Be open from six AM in the morning to eleven PM. They'll have music and drawings from ten AM to eight PM. Prizes for every adult with the purchase of a meal and free candy for children. This is the old Mercedes, and then whatever, what was that before? Yeah, the broker, broker. And you might go over there because he's got the, the big cowboy outside there. It looks, it looks kind of neat. With that being said, it would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge if you need any help check with one of us or staff. Positive thing might start tomorrow because with all the hell that we've had today, you may have to help your neighbors clean up all the leaves and, and the, and the trees. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Ms. Langworthy?
A couple of things first. This Thursday is our next Live Local event at the Twisted Smoothie over at fifty-six forty West Twenty-Ninth Avenue, right across the street from our newest restaurant, our second, third newest, the West Twenty, Twenty-Ninth Avenue Restaurant. I've been on council for six years. Next to Mike, I'm the oldest council member, not the oldest overall, because the mayor has been here the longest, but I've been here six years. And I've seen a lot of things happen in these six years, and I'm like Chrissy. I ran because I wanted to make a difference in my community. I knocked on doors, and every person I met felt like they became someone who was not necessarily a friend, but at least an acquaintance and someone I was glad I knew. A few years back, we had a redistrict, and during that redistricting, I lost a couple of streets in District Four. And for me, that was more personal. It was people I had talked to, people I'd met, and people I wanted to continue seeing around town. So it was, it was a very personal thing. It was, it was still, you know, acceptable change, but for me, it, it just spoke to what I care about this city. And this veto has taken away a right for me to be able to go out and talk to the people and explain to them again the shortfalls our city has. We have the lowest mill levy in the metro area, one point eight-three mills. It affords our citizens a great luxury in that their tax bill, at least for the city level, is very small. Our tax, our sales tax rate is the lowest. It's tied. There are two other communities with the three percent, but I mean, we're the lowest there. We have no stormwater fees in our city. We have no way to maintain that other than out of our general fund budget. And we have all these things that set us behind an eight ball, and here we had an opportunity to raise the tax and get some things done in the city. We're starting to see positive change. We're starting to see younger people come here, but we can't do the things that we need to do with the amount that we need, that we currently collect. And I feel frustrated that I didn't have an opportunity to go and knock on doors and talk to people and let them know why we're this way, and it's not just us spending money. Oh, and I forgot to say, we have no loans. We have no loans. We pay everything out of the money we collect. We do not owe penny to anybody. We don't pay interest on anything. So I mean, for, we're very fiscally responsible, and yet, here we are. We need to make road fixtures, we need to improve the businesses that come to our city, and we have no way to do that now. And that is frustrating. And then there's this other thing, this thing that happened with, with Davis Reinhardt. In the six years, I have seen several council members have legal proceedings happen to them, both times while I was here. Those legal proceedings were done very privately. I mean, they weren't, they weren't announced on the dais. They weren't made public in the newspaper. They were, they were kept in kind of a respectful manner. And then Davis does something that by all means from this report was, was not wrong. It wasn't clearly right. It just, it's something that there, we need to adjust and make our rules a little bit more concise. But he didn't do it intentionally. He wasn't out to harm anyone. He just wanted to make sure that the information he had was, was, you know, helped him make a better decision in the future. And because of that, you know, this all come to the dais, and instead of just being handled behind the scene respectfully by a council of eight, it seems that we're just kind of, we're going back to what we were before, a very divided council, and I don't want to see that. The first few years, it was terrible. The last couple of years have been great, and I'd like to see us being respectful to each other, and if we have a problem, addressing it in a better manner than we did.
Ms. J.
Really, I'm just delighted that the report revealed what I certainly knew to be true, that neither Mr. Reinhardt or Mr. Goff were at all purposely or unintentionally out of line. And I, and I really am, I'm delighted to know that they have both been fully and totally cleared. And I, I am, that's all.
Mr. Reinhardt?
I know that I'm being as intense as this has been, but so I was going to start with something a little more fun. We have the Farmers Five Thousand, which I think is important and probably doesn't carry as much weight as some of this other discussion, but four of us did sponsor the Live Local team to run in the Farmers Five Thousand. That would be in Joyce, Christie, Bud, and I. And I would encourage anybody to walk and run and come down and support our Wheat Ridge farmers. The second one is, I also think important, and we've been working and trying to get for a number of years to the start line to, to work on the drainage on the Chase Street, which we probably needed this evening, and we don't have in place yet, but the bids to, to get to work on, on turning the Denver Water Pipe we were lucky enough to acquire into a drainage system that, let's say, one of our, one of the cities failed drainages are due on the twentieth, and hopefully we'll get that working by the next storm drain, you know, summer monsoon, we'll have drains that work in that district. The last, and I almost hesitate to talk to about it, is my response to the investigation. And I, first, I'd like to thank the investigator for the quick thorough job of, of clearing me of any wrongdoing. Second, as my motives have been publicly challenged in addition to my actions, I do want to address a little bit my intentions and, and what I was trying to do. I had been approached, as I suspect many have said, by, by businesses that believed that our actions were hurting their businesses. The information we had been provided at the study session had not shed light in particular on, on what might be the aspects of it, or if there was any focus that we could learn from doing that. So I asked for additional information, which staff provided me. Shared that content with no one, and my sole purpose in, in having asked for that information was to try and better understand the impacts of the decisions that we were making on, on our business community. And finally, in closing, I'd just like to thank those counselors who did continue to support me, giving me the benefit of the doubt in, in the face of the falsehoods, hearsays, and attacks on my personality that were going on, and I'm very grateful for that support. Thank you.
So there's been a few good comments tonight. I guess what I like to say to the residents that I've talked to over the past year and a half is that I stand by the veto of the sales tax ballot question and use tax question. I believe in what I said, and I think for the record, I'll read it in the record, and I hope you will afford me the same courtesy that I did by sitting here and listening to the attacks and the innuendos. So I sent a memo to city council after thinking about it for a couple of days. I said, my reasons for vetoing this ordinance are as follows. Both mayoral candidates voted no on the ordinance on second reading, which indicates that council was not or is not united on this issue. This is the recipe for failure, for passage. The proposed sales tax ballot question results in the city of Wheat Ridge having one of the highest sales tax rates in the Denver metro area at eight point pi percent, currently seven point five percent. I think that's pretty, that's factual. The proposed sales tax ballot question results in a thirty-three percent increase in the cost of retail, in the retail cost to retail consumers. Currently, the median income for a family of four in Wheat Ridge is forty-four thousand dollars, and conversely, the median salary for a city employee, for one employee is fifty-five thousand dollars based on HR information. The proposed sales tax ballot question results in a thirty-three percent increase in the cost of development and/or redevelopment in the forms of increased use tax. This creates more roadblocks and expense for redevelopment in Wheat Ridge. The proposed sales tax question does not have a sunset provision. Studies have shown that the quality, that quality retail follows residential. That is not a theory, that is a fact that's been based on discussions with the city manager and other economic development. Retail does follow residential. Housing in Wheat Ridge is made up of forty-seven percent of rental properties, many of which are occupied by families with low disposable income. See number two above. The proposed sales tax ballot question does not address future funding for improving the housing stock and promoting homeownership in Wheat Ridge as described in the neighborhood revitalization strategy, which it calls for. That's not some pie in the sky decision that I've asked for via public and private partnerships. And that's, study was about four hundred thousand dollars, just the council liked to know. City council staff have not completed the priority-based budgeting process. There's no criticism of staff here. City council has not proposed any budget cuts using the least, less of a priority, less of priority programs and projects from the quartile four and quartile three budget levels. For example, in two thousand twelve, the following quartiles were proposed by staff. Quartile one is fifty, over fifteen million or fifty-one percent of the general fund. Quartile two is five, over five million at nineteen percent. Quartile three, which is a lower, lower-ranked program or project, at a little over six million or twenty percent of the general fund, and quartile four is over three million dollars or ten percent. Conceivably, council could data mine and find three million in savings per year if the quartiles were properly reviewed and city budgets were trimmed accordingly. The budget cuts would lessen the amount of new taxes needed in the proposed sales tax increase. Council has not performed the needed due diligence on the city budget to demonstrate fiscal responsibility to the voters. Based on my Thirty-Eighth Avenue survey and comments from constituents across the city, I believe city council has lost the trust of the public by spending over six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on a two-lane pilot project for Thirty-Eighth Avenue, which has divided residents and business owners. Council has created a win-lose situation with business owners and residences, especially in districts one and two, when you have traffic now leaving Thirty-Eighth Avenue going on the residential sides of the street, and council wants to now start a traffic calming program for streets like Ames and Teller and High Court because we have more traffic. This situation could have been avoided with little listening, compromise, and forethought by city council. I do remember that Mr. Steitz and Mr. Demott asked for no back-end parking. They asked for a different layout, and it never got through the, the process, this council or previous council. Maintaining a seventeen to twenty-five percent reserve creates an artificial shortfall of funds. The reserve fund should be used on public works and redevelopment projects. Other cities, as, as well as previous councils, maintain an eight to five, fifteen percent reserve. It's time to spend taxpayer money on the taxpayers and not hoard tax dollars for some future disaster. The reserve policy is not fiscally conservative. It is too extreme and not sound public policy, in my opinion. Lastly, I believe, I believe the will of the people has been usurped by the will of the council on numerous projects and programs over the past two years. Trust of the people has been lost by city council, which I still do believe. Now is not the time to ask the voters for more money with a blank check. So that's my dispassionate and my data-driven veto. And I guess my response to the people who criticized it, you know, Mark Twain once said, "It's better to keep your mouth closed to be considered a fool than to open it and remove all doubt." That's returned.
Calling to order the Weaver City Council meeting of September ninth, two thousand thirteen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk, please take role.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Christie Davis.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Mike Steitz.
Here.
And I was informed by Mr. Pond that he would not be here this evening.
Oh, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-six, two thousand thirteen?
Show move.
Second.
You have a motion to approve a second by Mr. Reinhardt. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven.
Sorry.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. It's the World Alzheimer's Disease Month, and I'd ask Daphne Rice Allen to please step forward to the podium, and our city clerk is going to read the proclamation tonight. And I guess our police officer is going to take some photos. All right, right up there. Thanks.
Whereas the nation and the state of Colorado observe Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month during the month of September, and whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder, tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas an estimated five point two million Americans have Alzheimer's disease, seventy-two thousand in our state alone, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States... disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas the value of unpaid care in Colorado in two thousand twelve was valued at three point two billion dollars, that's billion with a B, and whereas, in recognition of the individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with Alzheimer's disease, and the researchers who are seeking a cause or cure, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and related disorders, thereby improving the quality of human life for those living with Alzheimer's disease and their care partners, now therefore I, Jerry DiTulio, Mayor and the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, ask all residents to move the cause forward by joining the Walk to End Alzheimer's in Denver City Park on Sunday, September twenty-first, and proclaim the month of September twenty thirteen as World Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, signed by Mayor Jerry DiTulio.
And this is your copy of this. I think, did you want to speak? You can say something.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Alzheimer's Association Colorado chapter, we want to thank you. I have been the helpline coordinator now for five years and have grown and learned so much about this disease that I did not know. And as this proclamation states, it not only affects the person that has the dementia, but affects the family, the neighborhood, the church, your social club, your neighborhood, and so many police who have gone to incidences. And so, it's just grateful, we are just grateful that you all are recognizing this and standing behind us as we move forward with as much research and as much money as we can, and hopefully we will see everyone at the Walk in September.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any item that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Please step forward if you're here to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Please say your last name for the record, and please state your city and your address.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Snow, S N O W. I live at thirty-eight fifty Carr Street, and I'm here to speak to you tonight to make an announcement. Some of you have maybe heard already. I am the president of Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods, an organization that's existed in the city for twenty-some years, maybe, I think, twenty-eight years, and for over twenty years, we have held an annual election forum. It takes place here in the council chambers. This year, it will take place on October second at seven p.m. This is a wonderful opportunity that we bring to our citizens here. We actually get speakers here for and against all ballot issues. We get all candidates that you will see for all of the races that will appear on any Wheat Ridge ballot. And this year, being a municipal election year, there are races for five different seats in the city of Wheat Ridge, including our mayor seat and one position on each of the four council seats. So, on election forum evening, you will get to hear speeches from our candidates and also speakers for and against the ballot issues that will appear, both the statewide and if there's, I'm not actually sure yet if there's any others that aren't statewide, if they're county or special district, you'll hear speakers for and against them. Now, the fun part about this is that there's a way for citizens, all citizens, to participate. The election forum for our city positions is actually a question-and-answer format. Those questions come from citizens who submit them. So, I'd like to invite citizens of Wheat Ridge and anybody, this is anybody in the city, to submit questions that are relevant and current, that you'd like our candidates to answer at the election forum. So, here's what you need to do. If you have a question you'd like to submit, please email that to wrun@googlegroups.com. And I'll say that again, because I know if anybody's watching at home, you're grabbing a pencil. That's wrun@googlegroups.com. Simply email us your question. Let us know what race you're actually submitting a question for, whether or not that's for the mayor or for one of the council positions. And I-